We're done with it there.
Amen. Switch recording.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna ask our sheriff to open himself in the presence.
Thank you, Judge. Let's go to the Lord and pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we're so humbled to be in your presence today. Lord, we wanna take a second and thank you for everything that you do for us. Lord, you do so much for us that we're aware of, and yet there's so much you do that we don't even have a clue, and we wanna thank you for that also, Lord. Lord, I wanna thank you for this commissioners' court. Lord, I ask that you oversee this and hope everything that is done here today is pleasing to you, Lord. Lord, I wanna lift up our county to you, and some of the families in our county, Lord, that we've lost a couple of people through the Corona this past week, Lord, and we lift those families up to you. Lord, there's so many of us, so many in the county that are having issues with the Corona at this time that have checked positive, Lord, we wanna lift those up to you also and their families. Lord, I wanna lift this great state of Texas up to you, Lord, that we're having problems here in Texas also with the virus, and we just wanna lift Texas up to you. Then, Lord, I wanna lift our great country up to you, Lord, we're hurting right now, and I've never seen our country in the shape that we're in right now, being so divided. Lord, I just ask that you reach down and touch us, give us the people the strength and the wisdom to do whatever we have to do, Lord, to get back on the track. And I think the big thing we need, Lord, is you back in our life and you in everything that we do. I just wanna lift this country up to you and thank you, Lord, for everything that you do for us. And, Lord, I want you to bless this commissioners' court and this meeting today. It's in your most precious name we pray. Amen.
Good morning. One is Monday, it's July 13th, 2020. A five minutes after 10:00, a call meeting to order. We do have a forum here, the real floor is absent, don't know what is online or not, but anyway, and we acknowledge any guests who are today. First thing, we'll have a consent agenda, and if you notice in the minutes, we do have February, I think, 20 in there. The agent here, we've got some previous months, don't have today's in there. Other than that, everything looks good. Come on. Most of them made a second. No discussion, all in favor? Four. Okay, to deliberate and consider action on following items, and we're gonna move the sheriff up from number seven and eight to number one. And firstly, discuss if appropriate approved, the sheriff's office to sell the wreck 2017 for the store. And the sheriff, turn it over to me.
I've got an offer on getting rid of selling that total vehicle, but I'd like to advertise for it and sell it. I think we can get a little more than the offer, and I'm requesting permission to be able to advertise and sell that car that we had, that truck that we had wrecked.
Come on. Motion made by Gary Farming, second by Gene Thompson. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Okay, number eight item is discuss the request to vehicle allowance for the sheriff's office. And maybe you don't know.
Yeah, y'all were so gracious to give us a lake deputy last year and not, now so proud to get it, I forgot to put, get him a vehicle. So my request, what I would like to do is to take my truck that I'm driving now and stripe that and send that up to the lake, to the lake deputy, and let him have my truck that I'm driving now. And then in August, the end of August, the first of September, that paper, September 1st, I'm requesting to be able to get a car allowance, and I will furnish my own vehicle my last four months. That way, when the new sheriff comes in, he'll have the money to buy his vehicle, whatever he wants to drive. But my request is to be at September 1st, to be able to get a car allowance, and then I furnish my own vehicle, and then take the vehicle I'm driving now and stripe it out, rig it out. It doesn't need a lot, just stripe it basically, and turn that over to the lake deputy. I messed it up, asking, I just, I wanted, I thought I was kidding where we'd vote on it today, but I messed it up, so we're just gonna bring it to y'all and have y'all decide what we wanna do, and then we can approve, we can approve or disapprove the next commissioners' court here. And I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Liz, along with that, we'd have to have a budget amendment.
Yes, sir. That's what I was gonna interject, that we need, and just put out there that I have to put in the paper because it would be changing an elected official's allowances or benefit. So I would put that in, run that in the paper one time for any, if anybody had any comment, and then we'll do a budget and then do that also.
Okay, Liz, does the process is going?
Yes.
It's on Liz because it's only a discussion. What's on that again?
Sir.
It's only a discussion.
Yes, and I'll, and then explore and I'll add it to the budget and then sort it out.
That way, we need to get with Liz on how we set up, give it an order so we can get on the next special on.
I'll just get with Liz and we'll get it lined up. If it's odd, I'd like to request to be able to leave. My wife is waiting on me, and my bride and I are taking four days off. Judge, I appreciate you bumping me up. Thank you for that.
Appreciate your help, though. Okay, we're gonna go back to number one, and it's discuss the appropriate approved waiver and penalty and interest for first strike energy fault. Is Mr. Waters here? Okay, Ms. Melissa, you gotta come explain this to us, because nobody understands.
Okay.
Is your mind flustered?
First, I'm just wondering if one of them, in 17, they had a, 18, they didn't pay, and 19, they paid, all with the same address. The address was incorrect in 18 and 19. They have an agent, they're wanting, they're willing to pay attorney fees, but they're not willing to pay, they want commissioners' court to waive penalty and interest. They didn't, because they said they did not receive their tax bills. Well, the tax code says whether you receive it or not, it's due and payable. Personally, I think their agent dropped the ball, but that's just me thinking. They paid 19 with the same address. They have corrected the address now, but it was, they paid 19 taxes with the incorrect address all the time. So they want all penalty and interest waived. They told them delinquent tax attorneys are willing to pay the attorney fees, which doesn't sit real well with me.
But they didn't pay, I don't know if you're wrong or incorrect.
They did not pay.
Oh, they did not?
18 was not paid. They're still outstanding, they're willing to, the penalty and interest waived. The penalty and interest was outstanding. So it's, you know.
How much is it?
Oh, it's almost $2,000. I just, you know, I'm not for it, but I'll go with whatever commissioners' court decides.
You're sure it was their fault?
It was their fault. They did not give a change of address. We did not have forwarding address. They had an agent, you know. I know if I did that, I would have to pay. Okay. Are there any other questions on that?
So that can be a toll, about $2,800.
With the attorney fees and the penalty and interest, so that's...
No, the initial is 237.
Oh, okay, there, it's over 2,000 then. I didn't bring the paper with me, okay, so I knew I'd sent it to you, but I didn't bring it, I didn't think I was going to do that today. But, yeah, we're looking at $2,000. Well, I'm saying 2,000 because when they called, from the time they called in first, with the first in the email, but it is a little over, it's over 20, it's 2,300 and something. Okay. Any other questions?
I make the motion that we deny waiver, the penalty and interest for first strike 54.
Yes, sir.
Motion made, second, the motion was made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Gene Thompson, that we deny the penalty and interest for our first strike injury for court. All in favor? Number two is public hearing concerning the revision of Newton County M O D for the 2016 flood C D D G disaster recovery allowance, brought through the Texas General Land Office under contract D R 18-533-000-277, and D R 18-535-000-T279, subsequent amendment to the contract. Mr. Mark here, hurry up. Good night. Good night.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. Public hearing this morning, as the judge read, this is in conjunction with the method of distribution for the 2016 disaster funds that the county has received from the Texas General Land Office. Once again, these funds are received by the county, basically, as one lump sum. The county's established their own method of distribution as far as the expenditure of those funds and how the county would like for those funds to be expended in each individual county. Newton County was very aggressive as far as trying to assist their homeowners with these funds. They elected for 30% of these funds to go to infrastructure projects, the remaining 70% to go to housing. This is pretty much the opposite of what all of the other counties did with their method of distribution. On average, 65% of their funds went for infrastructure projects, with 35% going to housing. At this point in time, in the administration of the housing grant, we have assisted the county in marketing this program. We have received 136 applications. Those 136 applications were received over a period of nine applicants meetings that we conducted throughout the county, for a combined total open application cycle of six months that we received those applications. The first general applicants meetings, we had the three combined, which once again, we had meetings here in Newton, northern part of the county, southern part of the county. We tried to space those as close as we could. The combined total, we had 169 in attendance at the first group of meetings. The second group of meetings, I think we had a total of six people in attendance, with one of those workshops, no one showing up. So at this point in time, the grant is progressing on. We do have a timeframe on this particular grant. We do think we've, well, without a doubt, we have received all the applications that will be received for the housing program at this point in time. Of that, 70 of those have been denied. The remaining applications either have been assisted, or we are in the process of processing their applications. Now there again, as you commissioners are aware, one of the requirements of this program is 70% of the funds must go to low to moderate income citizens. With these funds, we're going to be able to assist all of the low to moderate applications that meet the criteria for the program. That's gonna leave us 30% to assist the non-low mod. So we're gonna, when it's all said and done, we're gonna have some applicants that we're not able to assist. It's not because the money in there, it's because G L O says we cannot spend more than 30% of the money on non-low to moderate income citizens. So the purpose in this public hearing at this point in time is to receive comment from any citizens that have any comment. As far as the balance of the funds that we're projecting at this point in time, we're projecting there's gonna be roughly $7.5 billion that needs to be moved from the housing grant into the other grant that the county has, so those funds can be expended rather than letting them go back to the state. So at this point in time, we'd like to entertain any comments that anyone may have concerning the moving of these funds.
You have 70, and what percentage of, or how many are low mod?
No, there's 139.
We have a few, you ruled that, we're down to 100.
We're down to 100, yes, sir.
And how many are low mod?
Uh, let's see if I can tell you that real quick, Commissioner. We have a total of 21 non-low mod, so that would be 49 low mod that we've either already assisted or we're working with at this point in time.
All right, I hear none. I don't know how long the public hearing could go on, but...
No comments, that's it? I said if there are no comments, there are no requirements as far as timeframe. We just do need to give the opportunity to anyone that does have any comments on the taking of these funds and moving them to the other program. Judge, also, Liz reminded me, there will be another public hearing at 5:05 this evening to give anyone that works an opportunity to show up. That one will be outside due to the current circumstances, there again, if anyone is not comfortable being in a closed environment with the situation such as it is.
Okay, so that's the kind of, the sort of meeting is of this morning, but we will have another one this afternoon at 5:05, probably in the Zeebo.
Yes, sir.
Probably.
Yes, sir.
It'll be outside, 5:05 this afternoon. All right, number three is consideration of resolution authorizing the execution of the county's transportation infrastructure loan grant program agreement.
Yeah, Judge, this is in conjunction with an application the county submitted a few months back, or they referred to as the C T I F program, the county Texas Infrastructure Program. This is through TechStop, where the county submitted an application for our funding. TechStop dot is gonna fund that application. At this point in time, they're requesting that a resolution be passed by the commissioners' court authorizing the execution of the agreement with TechStop for those funds.
Look on your agenda there. No, there is, there was a resolution, and we need to pass that. Or your motion to, I know that's it. Come on in.
Not second.
Motion to make, secondly, approve the resolution authorizing execution of the county's transportation infrastructure loan grant program agreement. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Okay, number four is the discussion of a possible mid-grant project.
Judge, last week, we talked quite extensively with the commissioners about the mid-application opportunity. Once again, they've kinda had a chance to kinda sit back, think it over. I did just want to publicly give them an opportunity to express any additional thoughts, ideas they may have on it. I know this is gonna be kinda short and sweet, but once again, this grant opportunity is a little bit different than what the county's familiar with, so I just wanted to see if there were any additional ideas of potential projects that would be benefiting Newton County that y'all would like us to look into.
Y'all, thanks for your visit with each one of the commissioners, maybe beforehand, and giving some possibilities, and we got around my thinking, if y'all follow any other projects that y'all might more entertain. Okay. Okay. I don't know, we discussed one project that would benefit... You want to submit?
Yeah. Y'all, we need to...
We talked, not all of us, but a couple of us.
Yeah.
Has talked about maybe trying to incorporate some of these water districts that are out there that are barely hanging on by the threads, try to incorporate those into one system, tie them into one system, and also maybe try to do a water sewer combo, to where we can get somebody over these rural water districts that will make sure that our, our, some of these people have drinking water and sewer, because what we've run into, especially me and Phillip up in the Liberty area, is they run out of money and there wasn't any funds to fix that system up there, and now the city has took it over and seems to be working real good. That's what we've talked about, and that would kinda incorporate every precinct, that would kinda, every precinct can get something out of it.
And that's definitely an option that we can look into for y'all and see if we can get you some more information on that, and we can go from there on. One thing that I don't think I pointed out in the workshops is the fact that I know y'all are accustomed to, as a rule, a 24-month contract, and all probability, these contracts are gonna be much longer, because once again, these are mitigation projects that the General Land Office is wanting to see a big difference as far as being able to benefit the citizens, so we're potentially looking at eight, 10-year contracts on this to get the projects completed, so.
So you said project?
Well...
So when you say project, we're talking about mid-grant for 15 plus, 16 plus, 17 plus?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Oh.
Sure, we have an order, 18, installation provided.
So would that...
He is now joining.
So would that be three different projects?
Yes, sir, you can only submit one project per application, and you cannot duplicate a project in two applications. So, yeah, they would be entirely different projects.
So what, the commissioner, you come up with the water, would that be one project?
Yes, sir, that would be, that would be one project.
So would be another project?
We would have to look and see what the geographic area is and the beneficiaries. If it's the same geographic area, the same beneficiaries, then they could both be one project. If, you could have more than one activity, but it has to be the same geographic area and the same people benefiting. So you could have multiple activities benefiting a specific geographic group of citizens.
So how, what kind of money are we bound to, whatever, 1 million or 50 million?
The 15 and 16, the minimum application amount is 3 million, maximum is 10 million. The Harvey, the minimum application amount is 10 million. Yeah, well, it's not required, but it's a scoring component. It's, on the 15, 16, you've got a maximum of 100 points, and low mod is 150, and these are competitive applications, so, yes, sir, for all practical purposes, it needs to be a low mod project, and you're not, you're not gonna have a competitive application.
So this, this would actually cross boundary lines in our precinct to accomplish this?
Oh, most definitely, yeah. Precinct boundary line is not a consideration as far as these projects would be. Once again, the things we have to look at are the low mod, and as we discussed last week, there's two ways that we could verify low mod. One is with the census, census data, if we benefit at least 60% of a low mod block group, we can utilize the census data. If not, then we need to conduct door-to-door surveys to determine the low mod benefit of that specific group.
We could also do a joint venture with the city also, would that make it look better or not?
Uh, as far as look better, it's not a scoring component, but you could definitely do a joint venture with the city if you so chose.
Well, the city has a shot at getting another town.
Yes, sir. Yeah, now 15 and 16 is open to cities and counties. 17, or Harvey, is open to cities, counties, drainage districts, water supply corporations, municipal utility districts, gets opened up broader, except for our...
For 70% of low mod. City.
City.
I'm sorry, I didn't say...
70% less low mod than 2?
Uh, they are, they are over 51% low mod, citywide. Now, the city of Newton has two block groups, one is low mod, the other one is not, but the combined total of the two puts them above 51% low mod.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank y'all very much.
Number five is the Texas property code, Texas code section 2604C, governing bodies shall designate an officer or employee to calculate the effective tax rate, no new revenue tax rate, and rollback tax rate, voter approval tax rate for the unit. Sweet, presented by Ms. Melissa Burke.
Okay, this is some of our new law, one of our new laws. 2604C says an officer or employee designated by the governing body shall calculate the effective tax rate and the rollback tax rate for the unit. So commissioners' court has to designate a person, can be me or anyone, y'all choose to designate as long as they are certified to use them.
And you all can do that?
Yes, sir. But it's just part of, it's part of the new law?
Oh, this is new.
This is new. All bitten, cord.
You got any suggestions?
Any suggestions?
And you've always had? Do it again?
Do what?
Wanna do it again?
Sure, sure. I serve at the court, you know, on that, at the court's pleasure, I'm more than happy to do it.
Maybe start us to serve and do that, and all the training.
I have all the training, I'm more than happy to do it, but it is the court's decision. I'll tell you why this came about. So many tax assessments were... So many tax assessor collectors in the large offices don't do it. They have an employee that does it. And this came about for transparency purposes. Because the, the tax assessor collector was actually taking it to avoid or submitting it if they weren't the actual person doing it. So this is about transparency. I can't, I can understand it.
I'm making a motion that's listed, uh, designate that Miss, Melissa Burke, I think that the officer calculate the effective tax rate and the rollback tax rate for the unit. Down, 24. Second? Motion made second, number five, number five, second, uh, Mr. Bomby, is, uh, late to me, Melissa Burke, is being the governor of bodies designate officer, uh, in more respect, uh, all right. Four. Number six, it says the Texas property code, section 2604 dash C dash one, the county Commissioner's Court directs designate officer calculate voter approval rate using the special disaster provision of 8%.
Okay, 2604C1 states, notwithstanding any other provision of this section, the governing body of a taxing unit other than a special taxing unit may direct the designated officer or employee to calculate the voter approval rate, tax rate of the taxing unit in the manner provided for a special taxing unit. If any part of the taxing unit is located in an area declared a disaster area during current tax year by the governor or the, by the president of the United States. So instead of, because of the Corona, it was declared disaster and the tax, the, what used to be the rollback rate can be calculated 1.08 instead of being bumped down to 1.035.
Say that again?
Go ahead.
Say that again?
Because...
Sorry, Paul.
Okay. The governor, president, declared disaster. So this says it can be calculated at 1.08 like we've always done instead of being bumped down to 1.035, new law.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Now, I do...
But, but it's only called, we under declare declaration?
Yes, sir, declared.
So when they lift that, when they lift that, it's going to go down?
No.
No, it's the same.
On Jan, effective January 1, 2020, it... It's been declared, it's time to do it. You, you can do it. Now, Paul Bettencourt is saying that's not what he meant, so... He was saying that a couple of weeks ago, heard the attorneys. Now, but that's what it says. So, that's up to the court, whether we go with 1.035 or 1.08.
And that agenda item goes in conjunction with number 24 where we have to do the resolution with y'all through this.
Right.
And it's not saying that we're going to increase our taxes by 8%. It's saying that if we need to, we can do above the 3.5. You know, it's not putting that in there, something like that. It's not putting this out of limits. But we have to do this resolution to be able to, uh...
Calculate.
To calculate 1.08.
Right. To calculate. No, it doesn't say you have to do anything, anywhere in between. I mean, there's been many times we've gone with less than the rollback rate.
Oh, yeah, way, way less, yes.
Many times, way, yeah.
It just tells Melissa how she has to go through that, figure this stuff.
How to figure it. And that I haven't gone rogue and done something y'all know.
What's the best thing to account?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. I don't have the, I don't have the certified tax, you know, certified appraisal yet. I don't have anything to make.
Yeah, it says...
It's all conjecture. Gives us the ability to go, it doesn't say you're going to do it.
You have an idea to either of us?
No. But it just opens that up to have the ability to go. It doesn't say you're going to or you have to, it just frees up to be able to go.
But if we wasn't...
When you look at the numbers and you say, oh, my God, 1.035, we can't make it, then you can go up to 1.5 or you can, somewhere in between. But you can go all the way to 1.08 if you...
If, if we approve it.
If you approve it, yes, sir. Otherwise, we're going with a 1.035. And, and I'm, I...
That's what the court don't understand.
Okay.
We'll be capped at 1.35.
1.035. The rollback will be one unless you approve this through a resolution.
And because we declared, then we can go up to the...
The 1.08 like we've always in the past.
Just like normal?
Just like normal. This 1.035 is new. Exactly.
How long this is going to last, we don't know, right?
We have no idea how long this is going to last. Hopefully, it's going to be over soon. Hold it, hold it.
But, but we, we have got to approve it to be 1.08.
You have to approve it.
Then we've got to have the resolution.
To be able to calculate. Doesn't mean you're going to do it. Doesn't mean you're going to go that high, but it gives you some breathing room.
I made a motion to approve it. Second? Motion made second, we approve the voter rate using the special disaster provision for 8% and make Mr. Bomby and, uh, section Mr. Price, in more respect, uh, all right. Four. Okay, we shift down to number nine. Discussion was properly approved of purchase of fiber optic line, land net for all Newton County. Shannon, you on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Could you, uh, present that to us and what you mean by all of Newton County officers?
Okay, uh, let me get a document up here. All right, um, and I'm thinking you can see my screen, right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, um, so right here, I have a quote from AT&amp;T and this is something we've been working up on, um, uh, for quite a little while, trying to get services out to some of these offices, um, and starting with, uh, we need, um, internet down at JP1, um, for stability so they can stay online and connect the net data. Um, and in the pricing schedule here, I just have it all summarized. Um, this particular one, um, would be a little higher than the others because, um, she doesn't qualify for all of the discounts, um, that, like some of the other offices, because it's not within, um, I guess, a particular range of, uh, their lines. Um, so that one would come in at $793 a month. Um, that's for a 20 mega, 20 meg down fiber, um, installation. Um, and the other, uh, that we're needing is for, um, precinct three. Um, and that one comes in at, uh, $590 a month. Um, now, this is for data on, on these particular ones here. Um, then we'll go down to talking about the hosted IP phones. Um, that'll tie into that as well. Um, so for JP3, we have the 590 and then also, um, let's see, it looks, I mean, sorry, Commissioner, uh, precinct three. Um, that'll be $60 a month, um, have three phones there for that particular office. Um, so basically, you're paying $20 a month for each phone. So you'll have two phones and one fax line is what we have quoted here. Um, and anytime you need to add an additional phone, um, it's basically, uh, $20 a month, give or take, um, and that's at a reduced price as well because, um, for the total quote, if we have 100 phones, um, with them, then we get a reduced cost. So it may be $30 a month initially if you just had 10 phones, but you get it at $20 a month, um, with 100 of them. Um, we have, uh, the, the born, I, I, that may be another agenda item though, um, for precinct one.
Yeah, we, that's, that's the next one, Shannon.
Okay, um, but just going through them right quick, uh, we have the courthouse and sheriff office, that's with 150 mega, 150 down, uh, direct, uh, dedicated fiber line, um, and it comes in at $963.70. Then you would jump down to the phones. Now, I have, I've estimated, uh, 38 phones and seven fax units, um, and that comes in at additional $900. So for the courthouse, 150 meg, plenty, wait, we only have 10 mags there now, and this is going to allow us to use the phones over the internet, so we're looking at about $1,800 a month for the courthouse. And I believe, uh, let me bring up this document, I believe we're paying currently, um, minimize this here. For the courthouse, we're paying 700, um, just for the ethernet, um, the, but the, the sheriff office is split off of that. We're paying another 846, um, so that's about $1,100. And then you add another $2,135 for the phones and the, uh, fax lines. So currently, we're spending, let's, uh, calculate that up right quick. More to... About $4,200 for the courthouse and the sheriff department, from what I could tell.
Right, right.
And we're only getting 10 mags.
Yeah, and that's my count on it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, $2,100 of that is for phones. And a lot of that goes into, um, long distance. Um, with the new system from AT&amp;T, you won't be paying long distance. Each one of our offices currently, right now, has to pay long distance, every call. Every single call that you call outside of Newton is basically long distance. I'm not sure of the range.
And that's what I'm saying.
Uh, but you can't call Houston without it being long distance. Um, so, again, uh, moving on, um, we have, I've added basically all of our offices and I've combined some, the tax appraisal and county clerk office, I've combined theirs, um, for another 50. If, if we could get a line over there to join theirs with the county, then that would drop off another $590 a month. They wouldn't have to pay for their own. It just depend on how y'all would want to go with that. Um, so they could just join in on our 150 and possibly do it, or if we had to bump it up to 200, but I think we would still have plenty. We have the food pantry on here, currently, y'all have, um, several services that we're paying there now. Um, this is just a 20 meg. Um, there's upstairs, there's a flood plain that gets its own service. I think the extension office, um, several of those are, are, um, being built, I think. We have Weir Gate on here, which, um, will be for the new office when it gets built, um, at $523 a month. Um, we have, uh, precinct three, um, Burt built, um, and, and that one, we're going to be discussing in a moment or just right now. Um, sorry, that's the wrong one, we just discussed that. Uh, precinct one. Um, and we've already signed this, is that correct, Miss, uh, Shereen?
Uh, yes, Shereen Norton, AT&amp;T. The 50 mags and the two in, uh, red or Deweyville and Curdenville, everything that is a 50-meg agreement, uh, has already been signed. We just get an email, uh, because the promotion is a little bit different, uh, they've got a special promo on 50-meg target. Uh, there's an agreement that we would ask for signature on the 20-meg and the 150. Uh, and I sent that to you and I can expand it.
Okay. And, and just, um, just to make a note, um, up here on number two for the tax appraisal, there's a $90 installation, that's actually waiting, it's going to be taken off.
I failed to zero all that out, sorry, Shannon.
Um, just an important note, um, to make here, all of these services, we're getting taxed exempt. I think we're currently paying taxes to Windstream on all of our services, so these will be taxed exempt.
I wanted to share, if you didn't mind, the beauty of being able to, uh, transfer your phone calls, three-digit dialing across the, uh, all locations. It, it'll be all tied into one big phone system. And yes, it includes all of your features, your voicemail, unlimited long distance, uh, if you want automated attendance, just to, thank you for calling the courthouse, dial one for this or two for that, you get automated attendance, so it's just feature-rich, long distance included, and you'll be able to transfer from the courthouse to the tax office, transfer from the courthouse to Deweyville, transfer from the courthouse to Newton, to, uh, any location in Newton, Weir Gate, wherever we're at, you've got three-digit dial and the ability to transfer calls. And that's when we put it all together into one phone system. Big, big promo on the equipment.
The, um, if you can see these phones down here, Judge, these are coming in at 1 cent each. Um, there's a special promo right now for it. And it may not have everything that every office would need, but it's only 1 cent for this particular phone, so it wouldn't be bad just to have the backup anyway. The next one over, um, you can purchase this one for a few of the alphas, offices, sorry, um, and it would come in at, um, let's see, I don't know if I have a price, approximately 150, 200, okay?
209, right here in the, uh, right above that we talked about the one-time call.
Yeah.
This, I, I included six of the, uh, 46 services because I felt like we were going to need some answering positions. Now, I didn't price any of the extensions. I just showed you that if you wanted the little attachment on there, that's for quick transfer, quick dial, they're $89 a piece. But the bigger phone with the color display is 209. The little phones, they were 12-line set. You've only got three lines, the other buttons could be transfer button, speed dial button to, uh, whether it be a toll free or whatever, so they are 12-line set. They'll probably handle everything, um, that you need, that you want to do, just that the bigger phones are better when you're talking about aging, uh, quick transfers with the attach, uh, when you're trying to, uh, answer, the answering positions, I feel like maybe we might need to look at a little bit bigger phone. But the little Yalens 42, uh, we do pay for them, 90 days later, you get all the one teams back. So big, big promo on the Yalens equipment going on.
And, uh, Judge, I don't want to hold y'all up too long, do I have like a time limit on this, uh?
The, the promo does expire at the end of the month on the Yalens equipment, so that's a huge promotion now. Um, they may not let us know until the end of the, you know, to the last of the month if they're going to extend it. It was a June promo that said to expire June 30th, and they rolled out a new one and recap... recapped the promo, saying that it is now, saying that it will expire July thirtieth. So, uh installation now, it might be several months before all the circuits are in and we're ready to install them all, so we would ask for the paperwork to uh to be taken care of by the end of the month, so that we can get that promo on the equipment.
And Judge, these prices here for the twenty meg, um that's so I could reduce some of the costs, but the best promo out there right now is the fifty times fifty megabyte for five ninety, whereas the twenty, um twenty meg is five twenty-three, so for another seventy dollars, you more than doubled um the speed and capacity of that data. And but that would be totally up to y'all, just for just the quote, I just tried to save money on some of the offices that may only have two or three um computers and so forth.
So are you giving me, giving us this in a package, or or how how are you?
I believe um these particular quotes, um you could, you could sign off on either one of them, um or just get the whole package, but you can uh explain that a little bit more, Miss uh Sherry.
Yeah, right, yeah, we worked to make sure we had a hundred phones so that we could get them for twenty dollars a piece. If there's only four or five phones, they're about thirty dollars a piece. Once you reach uh ten sets, it drops to twenty-five. But if we go to uh twenty, uh excuse me, one hundred telephones, then it it drops. So I would think uh you you would at any point fall into twenty-five dollars per instrument. They're not, they don't deal per telephone number, so if the main phone needs three or four lines on it, or an eight-line on it, that's no problem, it just got eight dial phones. We'll be in deal for the telephone sets, and the set includes your phone service, your features, your long distance, everything. So uh we worked to make sure that we had a hundred, um and basically you get eight or nine of them free, so if you get anywhere near ninety, then they'll uh uh add the other ten, 'cause they become free instruments. If you move them to another location, that's okay, that's no problem, they're just uh, that's why it's kinda put together in a package, there's no exception, it's it could be broken down and um add this to go, or you can all go at one time, AT&amp;T will have the manpower out there to have, uh even though it is in uh a uh Windstream location, uh AT&amp;T will pay Windstream installers, just to be at every location at one time, and be ready to turn it all up at about the same time, or phase it in, whatever works for you guys.
Okay Shannon, let me, let me ask you a question.
Thank you.
There's uh, you're getting the fiber into the courthouse, uh we've had that discussion before, and this is what this is involving, right?
Yes, um and and uh I think I spoke to Mr. Gary for a little bit, just a couple weeks ago, um you know, if we could get that um line, if we could get the equipment maybe installed right outside of the courthouse, might be beneficial until, you know, you get your restorations in order. Um, so I don't know if there's some additional offices, maybe that new office across from the sheriff department, or maybe some equipment can be dropped in at the sheriff department, um we'd have to look at some other options, unless you just wanted to go downstairs for now and then, or or if you didn't wanna do any additional work, bring it into the library.
Shannon, would it be possible that we could set up a workshop here in the very near future, so we could actually sit down and and go in detail and uh for our future and and uh go a little bit more in-depth about all this stuff, and still try and make a decision today?
Yes, yes. And I think uh for today, again, she was, you know, putting a deal, I think it mainly comes down to the phones, um but if we only added a few of the offices right now, they would be paying approximately thirty dollars a month for the phones each, um and once we get to a hundred, then it would reduce it, so if a year later we get up to a hundred phones, it's gonna drop our price down, as long as they still have that discount available. Um, so yes, sir, we can do that, um we just need today, we need to uh sign off on Mr. Bills, so he can um install, and uh I think that's coming up on the next item though.
All right, oh.
Not, not just Mr. Bills, but also um Ms. Connie and Mr. Gary's internet, we need those signed off on.
So what you got that under, 'cause all, all I've got is Mr. Born precinct one.
Um, I I I'm not sure if it was put on the the agenda, um it should've been, I guess the uh for the county, the Newton County offices, for all Newton County offices, we kinda changed the verb, so we could discuss it out, but that should've been under number nine, um for the uh precinct three commissioner office and Connie Smith.
Okay, what, what if uh on number nine, this is, we're still in the discussion now, uh if we make it a budget workshop, not a budget workshop, uh a commissioner workshop, and uh Thursday? Right, Thursday, and then, then so time for special commissioner court right there.
Okay.
Does that work?
A- as long as that works for for y'all and Mr. Gary and um Ms. Connie, um I think it, I think so, works for me.
Okay, all right, I'll have to get that posted, and uh we'll, we'll set you up for sometime Thursday.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion, we table this uh item number nine until we uh provide further discussion in the workshop. Uh, okay, I can do it. Okay, I can do it. Okay, uh, I hear a second.
Thank you.
Motion's been made, second, we table item number nine, make it Mr. Black, second, uh Mr. Bomby, any more discussion, uh on paper, four. Okay, number ten, to discuss an appropriate approved installation of the fiber optic line, the commissioner born precinct one.
Okay.
And then so that's, and that's to the tax office too, right?
Yes, sir, well, this, this pretends mainly to the tax office, this is for, um we've already got the AT&amp;T circuit installed, we can't get it over to um the tax office until these quotes are approved, so we can dig and bury the line going to the tax office, and that's what these two quotes are. We have one, um pulling it up now, uh one is for quarter services, or Carson services, sorry, um they would be doing the uh installation of the fiber, um and we have, uh one second. This is from Adams Utilicon LLC, they'll actually place three hundred and fifty foot of pipe, um with the pull tape, from Mr. Bill's office to the tax office, in the amount of seventeen hundred. Um, I don't think he's gonna do any digging, the last time I talked to him, um he was just gonna bore underground, uh and put this one in a quarter inch pipe. And then, once the pipe's in the ground, uh we have the quote um from Carson Services to actually run the fiber and the additional equipment to get it all working. That's for two, twenty-two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, but that's not to the tax office?
Yes, this is to the tax, so we currently have AT&amp;T, um uh over a few weeks ago, um installed the fiber line into Mr. Bill's office, but it's not connected yet. We still have to get the additional equipment from this guy here, from Carson, he'll hook it up at Mr. Bill's office, then they'll run the line over to the tax office. And then we'll bring them both online at the same time. If we, if we brought Mr. Bills on right now, he would just be, um the payments would start, and really not much we can do until we get the other one online.
So when we, when we approve this for the commissioner born, twenty-two hundred and fifty, I said it's out of, then that don't have anything to do with the fiber optic cable for commissioner born, I mean uh for the internet service for Newton County offices?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, this is uh, again, we already have, um we've already approved that um circuit for uh precinct one born, this is just getting it over to the tax office, so we can turn on the call online.
All right.
Um, and right here in the documentation, is where, she already has it engraved, where we already have that circuit, and it's been approved for five hundred and ninety dollars a month. That's for a fifty meg um up and down fiber line, so that's already there, it's just not activated until we bury this line. And AT&amp;T doesn't do that, it's on us to run it to the other offices. Now we could've added, just to, to make an additional point, I mean, we could've added another drop just for the tax office, then you would have two locations at five hundred and ninety a month.
No, I don't think we can do that.
No, so that's why we went ahead and said we're gonna bury the line, um going to there, and the reason that we have to run fiber is because of the distance, if we were running ethernet line, like the the upgraded phone line, it it doesn't have the distance, you can uh, the recommended range is two hundred feet before you start losing um your data connection, so for stability, running fiber, um is preferred.
Your motion's okay? So then, back. This motion's been made, say for approval installation of fiber optic cable through Commissioner Precinct Born, number one, and uh two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, uh make it Mr. Jean, and uh make it my gear, any more discussion? No, all right, four. Okay, number eleven, to discuss is appropriate approved, the purchase of video conferencing kit, uh with room monitors from Dale, so uh what's that all about, Shannon?
Uh, sir, right before we jumped there, um you approved one of the quotes, there's a second quote, that particular one you just approved was for the technician to provide the fiber line and the equipment, the switches, the routers, the first quote for seventeen hundred is to Adams LLC, and he needs to bore and and put the pipe in there.
So are you, are you saying that combines the installation of fiber optic cable, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
This is what the agenda said. The agenda said approve installation of fiber optic cable, and and this is part of it, it's just two separate prices, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I need uh Mr. Jean to include that seventeen hundred, uh Adam, is that right?
Yes, sir, Adam Utilicon LLC.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Jean has admitted his uh uh to add that on there, and take your, and it's been second, and uh we'll just put a brief vote on it, any more discussion? No, all right, four, he admitted. Okay, number eleven, to discuss an appropriate approved, the purchase of video uh conferencing kit, the room monitor from Dale, and uh Shannon, I'll just start with that.
Yes, sir, um this is the uh webcam quote, um for both of the court uh courtrooms, for commissioner court upstairs, and then by your request, to go ahead and have a kit installed in the courtroom that you're in right now, the district courtroom. Um, so these uh video conferencing kits would come with a camera and additional speakers, so that everyone at the table can be heard loud and clear, and we would not need the um, the iPads, which are called an interference, um when we're out there talking like that. Um, so with this video conference kit, each one owes eleven hundred and sixty dollars, um then it includes uh one um room monitor, um mainly a fifty-five inch screen, um so that would come in at right, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, um that's so you can monitor, or all the commissioners could actually see um the particular video transfer um coming through at the courtroom. Um, this doesn't include a computer, and I'm working on upgrading one of our older computers from one of the other offices, um that I would install and hook up to this monitor. Um, and so when you go into the courtroom, whether it be the commission courtroom or that district courtroom, um we would just sign in the teams and start the meeting.
Okay, uh and and this video conferencing, would it be where if other people's joining from outside, could they actually see what was going on in the courtroom?
That's, that's correct, that's exactly what it's for.
Okay, a- as we lean.
And the speakers.
And as we're leaning forward and the way we're changing times now, would this uh be to any advantage of the district court or county court?
Can you repeat that?
I said, would this be any advantage to our district courts when they're, like Ms. Court is, and uh the judge has a district court, and and when I have county court, uh is that something that could be used in there?
Yes, sir, and and that's what we have here on the quote, is that um we have the video conferencing kit for the district courtroom as well. Um, now this is gonna only be a camera and mics, we didn't add any type of monitor to it, um we never really discussed how you would present it, either um on the wall, um or if you need a screen, but the screen would be sitting right in front of you. Um, so I think with the, I figured I could set up another computer down there, and allow you to sign in, just like you're doing now on that computer, um and you'd be able to host the web conference for your um county court and district court.
Okay, so I, I think it's a, a coming of the times, uh technology is gonna be the way that we go, and uh so this is, I don't know if this is gonna be the end, but I think it's a good start.
Okay, and and just to throw out there that, um you know, at originally priced um WebEx's conference kits, and they came in at forty thousand dollars, so I found, I found one that was very um comparable um with Logitech, which is a good name brand for equipment, um and hopefully it works just as well for only a fraction of the cost.
Okay, any more question? Your motion's okay? That was more? I'll make that motion. Motion's been made, second, we approve the purchase of video conferencing kit, uh room monitors from Dale, and uh any more discussion? No, all right, four. Okay, uh number twelve. Okay, uh, number twelve, discussing appropriate approve of contract between Newton County and Texas Computer Association for Networking Vantage for Newton, uh, for the county. And this is, uh, replacing microintegration, which, uh, we've had lots and lots of problems. And, uh, I've talked to these people and, uh, a new local, and, uh, they actually call them when you call them. So, uh, Shannon, you don't want to spill on that anymore?
Uh, yes, sir, and, and I, and I'm recommending, um, TCA because they've been very helpful so far, um, in the last year or, or a little less. Um, and, and a lot of it is time that is not even charged for. Um, he did reduce, uh, the contract costs. He, uh, compared the contract from microintegration, um, and being that he does, you know, he has, he does have more technicians, more engineers readily available. Um, he did a comparable quote, um, and, you know, based on the hours and the numbers, um, we're getting a pretty good deal. Um, he did lower his price since, um, Mr. John, the Assistant DA, called him. He reduced it from originally fifteen hundred to thirteen hundred dollars. We'd be getting eight hours of onsite support per month and, uh, eight hours of remote service per month. Um, and basically the eight hours of remote service is free. Um, because if you add up their hours, um, the cost per hour that they would be working onsite, um, it comes up to fifteen hundred dollars or more, depending on if you need a network engineer or not, um, which usually charges at one forty-five an hour. Um, and then a technician would be nine and five, but they all work together as a team. Um, so that's the quote for thirteen hundred a month. Um, and that's one of the things that when you and I discuss, um, for security of the county, um, networks, um, this is one of the recommendations is, is having a team like this on standby when we have any questions or any problems.
Yeah, and, and just to let the commissioner know, uh, this is people that holds license and knows, uh, all of the whole network deep down rather than just on the surface, is that right?
That's correct, and, and, um, I like to think that I can do just about everything, but there's, there's those things that, I'm not a network engineer. Um, you know, I didn't go to school to be a network engineer, um, and so it having that professional and, uh, tech on, on board with us is, is gonna come in handy.
Alright, anybody got any questions?
I'd like to motion we approve the, uh, contract between Newton County and Texas Computer Association Network Vantage for Newton County.
Second. Motion is made to second, we approve the contract between Newton County and Texas Computer Association for Network Vantage for Newton County. Uh, any more questions?
Um, I have, I'm sorry, I have a small comment, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Along with, um, with their, their contract, um, I'm also being quoting replacing all of our firewalls, um, for a new, more efficient and offers way more, um, security than the, the firewall we have in place, which we've been having a problem with. But that's also one of the ways that I recommend, um, if, if we're gonna be getting rid of microintegrations or any of those that, that have installed these things in the past, it's gonna be very hard to block everything that they might have access to. And so I've, I've gotten quotes from them for replacing those firewalls, and we can discuss it later if, if you need to and so forth, but, um, that's one of those that it may come in at approximately eight thousand dollars to replace all of our firewalls. And that way we're sure we have intruders that we don't want coming into any of our networks.
Yeah, but that, uh, we'd like to add a later date, uh, because that's not listed on the agenda.
Okay. It, it being TCA, I just figured it would be joined in, uh, yeah, we can discuss later.
Yeah, we can, we can also pick that up in our, in our workshop.
Sound good.
So, we're down to, uh, voting, all in favor? For, number thirteen is to accept the county, uh, bedroom service officer report. The murder, the, the chance to read that. I'll make that motion. Second. Motion is made to second, we accept the, uh, the bedroom service officer report. All in favor? For, okay, number fourteen, it's, uh, we're trying to double the bill there, so we're not discussing that. Nor are you helping, I have number four. Number fifteen, discussing appropriate approve renaming, uh, Frances Coggins to continue to serve, uh, to serve as a member of Newton County on the Department Center Board of Trustees. And, uh, she's been on that board for some time now. So I just need approval for her to rename. I'll make that motion, approve the maiden, renaming Frances Coggins to continue to serve on the, uh, Newton County Department of the Board of Trustees. Motion is made to second, uh, on item number fifteen, any discussion? Top, all in favor? Four. You gonna work on the harder press? I'll be out of here. Discussing appropriate approve three hundred and fifty dollars on county maximums for individual burial, potential, living, faith, debt, deceased. She's sent a request in or some of her family has been sending a request for the county to have her first, her own, or burial expenses. We do have this, uh, in our budget. Three hundred and fifty dollars maximum. I've got it in there for that? I'll make that motion.
Sure, we know our AT&amp;T solution provided. Is now exiting.
Okay, uh, the motion is made by two, and second by Mr. Platt, that approve three hundred and fifty dollars to county maximums for burial expenses for living, faith, debt. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Number seventeen is, uh, discussing appropriate approve Newton County purchase, uh, airport slab number five, Richard Nelson. And I think, uh, the amount of five hundred dollars for the slab is there. It will be on that slab. It has been a lease agreement passed down for several years. I think as approved in the airport, I think it'd be approved if she bought slab for five hundred dollars probably. I'll make that motion. Second. Motion is made to, and second, uh, Newton County purchase slab number five, Richard Nelson. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Number eighteen is, uh, present a distinguished service award for two thousand nineteen year to the service of John Kirkson on behalf of Newton County Historical Commission. And, uh, John, I'll present you with this. I'm sorry. Richard, go ahead and do that.
Hold on one second.
Richard, go ahead and do that. You want me to touch?
Okay.
I'm glad. Thank you, John, that's wonderful. Okay, we're done with number fifteen. And discussing appropriate extended COVID nineteen disaster declaration until August the tenth, twenty twenty. And we're doing this, uh, just month by month, we never know what's gonna happen next, so we'll continue to do that until the end of this. Hope y'all, uh, don't mind, I made that approved. Thank you, folks. Second. Motion is made to second, we extend the COVID nineteen disaster declaration to August the tenth, uh, made by Mr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Palmer. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Number twenty. Uh, discussing appropriate approve of creation of the county chief grant officer position. And what I'm, what I'm wanting to do is, uh, create this office to take over all of our grants, we have got a total of, uh, ninety, uh, thirty-one active grants that just had, I mean, I know y'all don't see them all, but, uh, we've, we've got that many total, fifty-four million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, eighty cents. And with that much money having transferred per, you know, hands and, and all the paperwork that has to be done, uh, sooner or later, all these grants will be altered. And if the paperwork ain't wrapped, we're gonna be in great pain. So, uh, what I'm saying is, uh, I need to create this office to take care of just the grants themselves. So if I could, uh, have y'all's consideration in creating that, I appreciate it. I'll make that motion. Motion is made to second, we approve the creation of the county chief grant, uh, officer position. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four. And number twenty-one, discussing appropriate, appropriate budget, a budget amendment for the grant, uh, chief grant officer position. And as, uh, we have just changed it places, want to create that. Make that motion. We got to figure out how to do that. Yeah.
You create a position and, uh, and office. For dogs or something.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Huh?
We're working on it. You have to be a sign.
I'm just gonna say that.
We're working on it.
You have to be a sign.
Huh?
You have to be a sign.
Okay.
We, we gotta create it. We need to have the money, and then we got to-
I don't wanna get involved.
And then we got to get the person to apply for it.
Okay.
And so, uh, uh, what we're working on. But I need, I need, so I can give.
You got it.
I, I want, I want also back up just one minute. Liz and, and Ron, they took on a great responsibility when we deleted Adam's contract. They picked up a, a great responsibility to get this accomplished, and they have done great.
They've done great, yeah.
Uh, GLOs also said that they have done great. So I want to commend both of them, but you talk about the money. I think the money, what's left over in that contract will pay for their, pay for that position for several years.
So we're done, uh, so Ron is, uh, staying there, right?
Yeah.
We, we don't have to do anything with her. She stays there, she's right.
And then when we get into after her, uh, cause or whatever, we get into budget workshop, we'll talk more about how we're gonna actually set, structure it in it. And how that's, you know, we just-
I know, but we don't have to go out, she's always there.
No, she's, she's employed, she's working on branch. And that, you know, they're good.
I'm good. I'm good.
That's it.
Not bad.
You're not getting away that easy.
Okay, uh, motion is made by Mr. Platt, and I heard a second. Second. Motion is made to second, we approve budget amendment for chief, uh, grant officer position. Any discussion? And we're gonna start with the maiden?
Um, did we talk about August, Judge, because we're gonna have time, because we got a post job.
We, uh, three days, three days.
Three days, and then, um, probably we're shipped for August the first.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's what we had talked about, we're shipped for August the first. That's when we get everything done.
Send me the back. Okay. Any more discussion? Now all in back? Four.
Okay, uh, number twenty-two, discussing appropriate approve of grant advanced, uh, payment costing procedures. Let's leave it.
Hope y'all are okay with me down that message, I can't talk with that message. Y'all probably can't hear me. This is, uh, payment procedures that came up when we were in a, a review, a desk review, uh, was it the infrastructure, Mark? Yes, infrastructure grant for two thousand sixteen. Um, and the advanced payment procedures is where, you know, if they do their work, we ask for the draw and then we pay the contractor. Well, they slapped us on the hand because we didn't have a, um, a formal payment procedure. We had one written up, but it hadn't gone through Commissioner's court. Just outlined in according to the, uh, the federal code of how we're supposed to handle it. So that's what this is, that we have a formal, it's in the minutes, and we can present that to them, that we do have these in place.
Is it for all of them?
And it's for all grants, it's for all grants, yes. But I think y'all are talking, y'all still-
Yeah, I see.
So that's, uh, we just go.
I'll make that motion. I'm second. Motion is made to second, we approve the grant advanced payment procedures and costing. All, all in favor? Four. Number twenty-three is select, uh, this select committee to present, uh, regulations for select contract for two thousand twenty, uh, disaster total package. And Lynn?
Okay, this is on our debris management removal and disposal, uh, that Crowder Dog has now. Their contract is in August, current. So, uh, Ola, myself and the judge, we had, uh, six submittals. Yeah, six submittals. We had, uh, series environmental, Crowder Dog, custom tree care, DRC, emergency, KDF enterprises and TFR enterprises. They, uh, we spent, gosh, five hours, six hours, going over their submittals, uh, you know, just kind of talking and with each other and make sure we understood everything. And after we, uh, we did the scoring and it came out that DRC Emergency Services scored, uh, the highest, they scored the best on it, and TFR Enterprises came in second. And the committee recommends that we, uh, contract for DRC Emergency Services.
Where they at it?
Don't they have a office, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a load of songs?
Yeah.
Did you know them all?
Yes.
And I did send out for, that's the other thing I was gonna tell you, you said that, Commissioner Tommy. I sent out for reference, some of their references, a reference check on them, and they got just really good references from, I mean, the active con- on them, and they got just really good references from, I mean, the active contracts right now.
They also have.
Yeah. They're jerking it right now.
All right.
And then after they're approved, they will have, we have to work with them to get their contract done.
Well, I make that motion that we accept DRC's emergency, uh, approve. Second.
This, one, one quick question, is payback, we have all run, we have action, and I'm not a duty. If you want to select a second, and the alternate is really one thousand. We have very valid Crowder Golf, they're qualified, we have a contract, even if you're hard, and definitely DRC, we're excited about it, they're very grateful, all right, now.
They gonna hire a little bit?
It's a, unless it's part of the contract, it's not a duty, we'll give it any.
Yes, yes.
Of course. And they got the finances back.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we've had a lot of this, the finances, you know, look like they're doing, the paycheck seem to fall a little.
Yeah.
Sure. But, uh, they people here, their finances.
They're uninterested in it, of course. And I have copies of all this, and all this, if y'all have, uh, if you're really need.
So do, do you want to have alternatives?
Sure, y'all can, y'all can show it, you're right. I mean, we've never had these meetings or alternate. And, you know, like Judge said, this company is very well organized, and they have finances, I mean, they're financed, and they don't have an issue with that, with their money, their subs, they have a list of subs, and they.
Those be awesome, I think they're very good for it. Anyway, uh. Okay, motion made, Mr. Farmby and secondly, Mr. Platt, that pick DRC, uh, the contract for two thousand twenty, uh, disaster total package, any discussion? All in favor? Four. Number twenty-four, is considered directing the voter approval tax rate by calculating at eight percent, that the manner of providing special taxing unit is up, in kind of conjunction with.
It works in with that same one that Melissa was talking about, Marko, but it's an actual resolution that we have to do, and it's just, it's ordering that the voter free tax rate should be calculated in the manner provided for special taxing unit, eight percent is provided in statute. And it also says that the adoption of the order does not require Commissioners' court to adopt any increase in the tax rate, but it does reserve the option for us to go up to eight percent if we act.
I make the motion that we, uh, consider it, that we attempt to vote approval tax rate calculation of eight percent in the manner provided for special taxing.
Second. Motion made second, we would, uh, direct the voter approval tax rate to be calculated eight percent in the manner provided for special taxing. Any more discussion? All in favor? Four. Number twenty-five, discussing appropriate approved Utten County, between Utten County Net Data or the retention, destruction of any hard drive that would be replaced or net data, security rules.
This came about when they had to, um, this is our, y'all know this is our financial software, and some other software with the JPs, et cetera, but anyway, they had to update, had to replace a hard drive in our server a while back. Well, under our new security rules, we're not supposed to let that hard drive go with anybody. So we have to do this, um, just a little short contract with it, so that we can retain that hard drive, and then we'll dispose of it, you know, Shannon will dispose of it according to our security rules. And it's an increase of around fifty dollars a year with our contract with net data. But it's just, it's a security thing, so we can't let that, and he's got all of our data on that hard drive.
So we let our IP, uh, take care of it?
Yes, Shannon would take care of that, of course.
Make that motion.
I say.
Okay, motion made second, approve the contract for Utten County Net Data for retention, destruction of hard drive, we replace the part with the data, security rule, uh, or special, uh, all in favor? Four. Okay, number twenty-six, approve advanced funding agreement for the bridge replacement of rehabilitation off the state system between Texas dot increasing three.
This is the, uh, Commissioner Farmby's gonna have, uh, under the offering bridge system, he's gonna have a bridge done on County Route two thousand eighteen of that Hackberry branch. And this, this is the advanced funding agreement that's needed, so they can get started on that. Okay, from text on.
I make the motion that we approve the advanced funding agreement for the bridge replacement of the state, put the pressure to all state system between, uh, between Texas, between the Texas dot and three seven three.
I say. Motion made second, we advance funding agreement for bridge replacement of the transportation, or transportation of the state's system between the Texas dot increasing three. All in favor? Four. Okay, number twenty-seven, is a resolution approved construction of a bridge on County Route two thousand eighteen at Hackberry branch, partnership with Texas Department of Transportation.
This is the second part of that, they need a, a resolution, just that Commissioners' Court is agreeing that we do this bridge through this program.
So, move. Second. Motion made second, approve the resolution for the two thousand nineteen County Route Hackberry Bridge partnership with Michigan Department of Transportation, any discussion? All in favor? Four. Okay, number twenty-eight, is, uh, the Texas Relief Grant Agreement, and contractor restored history center, and that's a grant, this is.
Yes, and this is the, uh, this is another grant that came off of the COVID disaster, whatever, and it's the, uh, it's the Texas Humanities Grant, and Miss Sherry Leach and Miss Carrie worked on it, too, didn't she? Miss Carrie and I, we all worked on this to get it, and it's gonna, they were awarded five thousand dollars, and this is to help, um. Do the electronic files, so people that can still do research, but they don't have to come into the History Center, you know, a lot of people just want this thing on. And so that way, they can still work on it, they can share the information with folks. And it's, this grant is five thousand dollars, and there's, and it could possibly go up to fifteen thousand, since they were first awarded the five thousand. And we just need Commissioners' Court's approval on that, just second part.
I make that motion.
Okay.
Motion made, uh, Mr. Farmby, secondly, Mr. Dean Thompson, have approved the grant five thousand dollars, uh, between the Texas Relief Grant Agreement and contract for the, uh, History Center. Any discussion? All in favor? Four. Okay, Ms. Liz, Ms. Liz, do you think of it?
Yes, Michelle. I suppose so. Okay, I'm gonna bill this for G, twenty twenty. General fund, nine hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. You guys, state funds, three thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Road Bridge General, seventy-one thousand three hundred eleven dollars eighty-one cents. Road Bridge precinct, one, one hundred forty-seven thousand fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. And that was a note payment that he had in there, that's why it's so high. Uh, Road Bridge precinct, two, forty thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars thirteen cents. Road Bridge precinct, three, fifty-three thousand fifty-six dollars twenty-eight cents. Road Bridge precinct, four, eighty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars ninety-nine cents. Port House Security, one hundred eighty-five dollars seventy-six cents. VAW grant, five thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and eight cents. Commissioners Special precinct, one, thirteen thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars thirty-three cents. Commissioners Special precinct, two, twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars nineteen cents. Commissioners Special precinct, three, seventy-three thousand two hundred twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. Commissioners Special precinct, four, one hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars thirty-nine cents. Records preservation, one thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars thirty-one cents. Solid waste, forty-three thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety cents. Voter registration, three thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents. County lottery, twenty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars fifty-seven cents. Historical operating, six thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars fifty-three cents. FEMA, five hundred eighty dollars seventeen cents. Grants, six thousand eighty-seven dollars seventy-two cents. Technology funds, eight hundred fifty dollars and thirteen cents. For total of one billion seven hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. And then G was when we paid out, the hazard paid, so that's one reason that it's so high for G.
I make that motion, we accept bills. Second. Motion made second, uh, motion made, Mr. Farmby, uh, secondly, Mr. Dean Thompson, pay the bills, any discussion? All in favor? Four. Okay, Ms. Liz, I'll turn it, uh, the budget workshop over to you.
It's gonna be short, asleep. Can't jump around this much more. Judge already got it, so. What I did, I just, this is just the start, and we're gonna have, we gotta have a budget workshop, we gotta schedule it out, so we can all sit and go over it. The first part is a copy of what the, um. Departments have requested. That's the department requested, I've gotten back, and so I made a copy and put in there, so y'all could be looking over those, and Judge, I have a copy for you, I'll look at it. The second part is just to print out the, uh, off of our system, just where we're at, I printed that out, I think Friday afternoon, Saturday morning, got that together. So the first part mainly is for y'all to start looking at and see what's being requested by some of the departments. But we will be having a budget workshop probably in the next couple weeks, so we can really start looking at it. So I just want to give that to y'all. Got any questions, just call me. I'll come back, whatever y'all need to do.
Okay, that's all, all you have, is the budget workshop?
Yes, sir.
We don't have any public hearings, uh, like the public hearing of the hundred seventy, five and five, I was the zero.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yes.
Uh, here, motion for adjournment. Most of you have everything. Okay. Motion made second, adjourn, well, miss, well. Have you had a deal? I don't think you have. Or, what do we have? And then, it's got, uh, it's got.
Yes, our students, they make the change program that we have, we do the workshop essentially.
It'll be at two?
At two o'clock.
Any deal?
Dana's supposed to be on, um, I don't know who else, there's a couple people from Georgia, who's gonna leave one. Uh, I don't know.
Do I need to drop off?